Alright, there we go.
We're coming meeting to order at twelve oh four.
Sure, okay. Commission, climate?
Here.
Commission, is it commissioners, right? Commission and Senator?
Here.
Commissioner Gardner?
Here.
Commissioner Dr. Chitcomb?
She's, she's not here, but she has an ex, she's asked.
Okay, and then Chair Zepet.
Here.
Okay.
Okay, alright. So, um, we're going straight to the active agenda introduction to new planner.
We have a new planner here with them at this.
Well, congratulations.
Yeah, it's a week perfectly.
I'm kind of really excited. So thanks for welcoming me in your meetings and hopefully we can keep the ball rolling.
Yes.
New planner for? See, oh.
Yes.
Okay.
So that should be helping with a bunch of the stuff that I have been putting on so we actually get something done.
What's your, what's, where do you feel like you're gonna start? How, first of all, when did you start here?
Uh, today. Yeah, yeah, it gets me thrown into everything. Um, so just like a quick background, just an elevator pitch of who I am. I'm from Illinois, a really small town in Illinois. I went to school at Western Illinois University, graduated with my masters in community and economic development. Um, I did a few internships, one was with the IRA, one was with a town in Rushville where I worked for the economic development department. And then with the IRA, what I did is that I did this thing called the back in program where we went around to rural communities and we pretty much did um, little kind of kickstarted their plannings and their economic development efforts and gave them a map out of how to approach um, development and how to build those heaps that they wanted. And then throughout the next six months, they would call us and keep us posted on what they were doing and we would give them information from other. So, kind of similar to hopefully, um, what you, what I hear that you guys are doing a lot with like the community development and hopefully that'll be ease, pretty easily into, um, the planning and hopefully a lot of my experience will be able to kind of translate to that, so.
Cool.
That's me in a nutshell.
Yeah, yeah. Nice to meet you.
Hi, I'm Jackie.
Hi.
That's a donor heart. I guess she wanted to join us? Okay.
Yeah, cool. Welcome.
Are you familiar with the Lord?
You know, I basically, I, I know of you from what I've read online, but visiting, nothing.
Did this make you come this area or did you come here prior to that?
So I've actually never been in Washington ever before.
Prior to this job?
Prior to this job, yeah. Um, basically, so there is like a, um, I don't even know what it would be considered. It is an American Planning Society and I saw that there was a few job postings and I basically applied for just like jobs that looked like there was stuff going on, like there was momentum going on. So I looked at like the website and I looked at particularly the like community department and seeing like what initiatives were going on. Um, and then I applied to different jobs and then this one just after the interview, honestly, it just gave me really good good vibes. Um, and I just really, really liked it, what they had to say and the questions that they asked and how they responded to my questions. And I talked to my partner about it and they were like, feel it, let's do it. So.
And you found a house?
I found that. Actually, I did, yeah. It's up until three weeks before I made. It was, we applied for two different ones before this. One I found out that I definitely loved that I'm not doing and not giving. Uh, I didn't apply for it, but it was a possibility. And then the other one was actually a crosser. Um, and then we didn't get that one and we found out about that three weeks ago, so we were planning on going this whole time. Um, but then we found a really, a, a really good one here, so. Yeah.
Renting, no, I, yeah.
Yeah, renting, definitely. It's a basement, it's like a basement apartment kind of thing.
Oh, cool. Buy on your own, so.
Yeah.
And where is, where is, and you don't have to give me the address, but basement, is it on the hill? Is it?
It's on, it's at the end of Sunnyside Ave going west, you know, coming down the hill, there's like the.
All around the hill?
Yeah, I can down.
No, it's good, good area.
Coming on.
It's just, yeah, we make it a good area. If you, you're a good neighbor, like the restaurant is good.
Yeah.
I mean, like, you make your area.
Yeah. Thankfully, I only have quite literally like two neighbors and then the rest is just open space.
Nine.
And, but one of the neighbors I found out likes to fish and my partner loves fishing and the other one is a retired cop that just like just stays to himself now, so.
Cool.
We're, we're just really.
You're just doing great.
So.
They're such a luck out.
Fishing here.
Yeah.
Really good, the right.
Awesome. Cool, alright.
So thank you for the introduction.
Yeah.
I'm probably gonna, let's move forward because we were talking about that kind of development. So now the city is here, I will be scheduling the trip up to Anachi. Uh, if we can't do that, she'll help me with the economic development plans, so we'll be kind of, um, jumping into that. We, I'm soon here.
Alright.
Uh, now to item B, Main Street Program.
So I have a little handout for everybody. I mean, I think we've kind of talked about this in the past, so I really wanted to start diving in a little since since our revolving loan fund stuff is mostly taken care of. I'll be going to the council in August, probably not the first meeting, but the second. So, I will let you, I'll keep you updated as that happens. Um, that's for that, to get the resolution, but that takes just a little bit of time. So, let's go here to the Main Street. Program. So Washington Main Street Program is a program that is basically administered well, it's, it's created, it's housed under DAP, which is the Department of Archaeology Preservation. And a lot of, but a lot of the programs are run underneath the Washington Trust for Historic Preservation. So it's kind of like a two, a dual partner thing. So, um, and we can definitely explore this a little bit and it'll make it, again, it's gonna make it a lot easier with two of us here. So, um, we've had it as, on the run for this RCW, so the findings and intent of the Washington Main Street Program. So Economic Vitality of Downtowns and Neighborhood, um, Commercial Growth. Um, Revitalization of Neighborhood, Downtown Neighborhood Commercial Districts and Marketplaces. Um. Creating a creating an environment to basically empower and, uh, property owners and renters to revitalize their buildings. Um. Maintain local economies, think about and develop local. These communities look, I mean, good, these communities a little bit, um, different. City to work with these, provide technical assistance. Um, and then one of the big ones is tax incentives. So it also provides a tax incentive program for businesses like your downtown area. So that's, that's kind of like the findings and the intent of this chapter. Um. So really what this does is it is a program where the city of Sunnyside through, through you and through city council uh, basically set up a downtown district. That district more or less retains itself. There's, it can be like a self-assessment criteria to this, where in building the businesses that are part of this district. Uh, you create the main street program, you create a fund for yourselves, for the businesses in that district. Um, that fund can be used for facade programs, some loans, the hiring of staff, that kind of stuff, um. So that would be, and it doesn't have to be full time, but it could be some, hire somebody to come do like planters or somebody to come do decorations or something like that. Um, so that's, and then, um, then you'd have maybe like a, like a director at some point in time or maybe somebody from the city would serve as a part-time downtown director, part-time city, something or another. So it, it, it sets up this mechanism and then, and then the other big part of it too is, um, I'll, I'll jump into that, is a tax incentive program. So there is a big tax incentive program. So if somebody were to purchase a building downtown and they want to develop that building, there's a program that somebody can jump into to develop this building, be locked into a certain tax, like a tax rate, so they've got about a billion, four hundred thousand dollars and they put like, I don't know, a million dollars improvements into it. And locks the building into that four hundred dollar, four hundred thousand dollar tax rate that was on, so you're not then taxed on that improvement value. So you, you're locked into that for X amount of time. And then I think I might write it on top of that, so you might get a little bit of like that to help pay for your, your.
That's really good.
Yeah, right. Um, yeah, so, so this, it's a really cool program and if you think like this, um, there are quite a few communities, there's really two two, um, it was in here. So there's really two ways to become this. It can be a mainstream community or it can be an affiliate. One that are, you're interested, um, and you just want to like.
Affiliate, yeah.
You just want to be like a part of it, if it's going on, but you're not really ready to get there.
Oh, make it a community, you want to be the first one.
Yeah.
Yeah, we know, we agree, we're on the hunt.
So, so then, then there's actually becoming, I mean, I think, Walla Walla.
Crosser.
Crosser, downtown, yeah, kind of, Cadillac, Shland. I don't know what it was, but I imagine it's, it is, um, but everything about these like little communities have done this, they really kind of.
Flourish.
They, they've really kind of built it up for themselves and I don't, I don't think Grandview or Ranger has this one, so it'd be.
Oh, Grand, Grand recently, yeah.
I mean. Oh.
Last year.
And they're really active.
Yeah, right, so we could do, yeah, we would kind of, we'd be, do something like that because it kind of enforce, force downtown businesses.
Yeah. Is what they want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so that's, that's kind of the program in a nutshell and that's kind of what I was saying, we'll take a trip to, um, Anachi. If I was market. A little bit, um.
What, what is it?
We haven't studied it yet, so that's.
No, no, the farmer's market, where they have like a whole week or it's.
All the time.
All the time, every day.
Oh, they are.
I was gonna say, oh, that's, hi, let's go.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's awesome.
Yeah, so.
It creates a lot of jobs.
Yeah.
They're working every day.
So it's, it's like a, because it serves as like an incubator for the area as well. So they have like a big, um, Anachi.
It's right there.
Oh, there we go, okay, perfect. See if it'll pop up. So it's, it serves as like an incubator.
That's just what I was thinking this morning, um, we need an incubator building downtown.
That would be awesome.
And I, I don't, I don't, it's, I'm, I'm building, that's like, hey, I mean, I got from the little few times that started, we've been looking for the market in that structure. So I think, like, and I don't want to talk out of tune. I feel like if we could take a building downtown and turn it into a, um, just an incubator, like little basically booths, but you know, depending on the size of the building and then just help people get started. I feel like that, the farmer's market kind of helped a couple businesses already and so I feel like we are, we're hungry for that in Sunnyside. And people are just afraid to take that leap because the history in downtown is, is familiar.
Yeah.
And so if we could just, just say, okay, with a little bit of money and just like this, with a little bit of space, um, you can get started. And just gonna teach people how to bake their money and not use it and, and.
Investments.
They, they just keep going and tell, you know, give them two years, three years, whatever it takes. And then they can go off and do their own thing and you can bring in a new business. I really feel like, even if you started with a building that would only hold like six people, maybe ten people, I don't know. And Bill Flower has one down here that would hold twelve.
Yeah.
And it's a sign.
All the time.
I mean.
That one is, um. The, the electricals.
So you, and you're. Is, is right in there.
Yes, technically I'm on an incubator.
Yeah, and so, and I know that it's, the Port District has done it and it has.
It one of those.
Yeah, it's, it won't be on, it can do that downtown. I mean, like, I'm like all over that.
Yeah.
That's a couple, a couple buildings that, I think we've served, really, really like the, like the red building that said across. Um, I don't, I don't know where the property owners at.
California.
Yeah, somewhere, who knows? And then, um, uh.
One of them's supposed to be a restaurant since like, whatever.
But it's never open?
Then, yeah, it was supposed to be a restaurant.
Which one, the one that that one's left?
The one that's two years left, yeah.
Yeah.
So, well, then I didn't see it, and then there's another one.
Yeah.
That one's supposed to be a restaurant, what, a restaurant?
Downtown, what he's talking about.
Yeah, the red one, the, the red.
Oh, yeah, the same one, that used to be like the eighty eight cent store.
Yeah.
Serious, yeah.
Yeah, eighty eight cent store.
Oh, my, that one's here.
Go down.
Any building, it's a big, big space.
No.
And she's done, he's done, I know, go deeper. Cause he lived back.
Yeah, he lives in the back.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I thought about that one specifically, but that was just a thought.
Yeah. Yeah, so. Is there a building? I, I can definitely check to see what's on.
Yeah, we'll have to try to find one, but, but there's, um, the other one I think of that's sitting vacant right now is the one that the dealer owned.
Which one?
The, the old, um, right next to Cascade, is it Cascade National Gaps?
Oh, I know that one, yeah, that building, you're right, no.
That old event center.
Who owns it?
Yours.
Really?
That was, uh, Gomez's last.
Oh, maybe.
Ask them, make sure they ask.
And.
So there's the, I want you, go sit into a coffee or whatever.
Yes.
Yeah.
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 They actually renovated it recently.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So maybe they are using it.
Old, um, well, just part of it. Some members of, just one of the insurance company in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and Roger Brooks said, in his thing says, we need a, like a parking lot or a empty lot that we could just put tables and chairs and lighting and so people just to, to light up that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, cause they, they wish, yeah, we can show that there's potential in lots of things. So I was laying in some audio.
People to, yeah, just maybe get people just down there, so that we can see it's feasible. Especially with pizza place.
I know.
Soon, soon, soon.
Very soon.
Oh, yes, already.
Not, not, they're waiting on electrical panels, everything else is ready.
Oh, wow.
Oh, wow. Which is inspections for electric.
Electric panels were out. There's a new pizza place coming in.
I love some good pizza.
They have pizza too, I mean, like, it's top, it's top notch. They got their startup.
That's awesome.
Yeah. She's, she graduated science high, so she did, she did that pretty well for herself.
Sunny cider.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There we go.
So it's funny, say proper, or the parking lot over here. We can't use that for anything, can we?
Yeah.
That might be.
To have a, a city park, yeah, we can do whatever we want with it.
Well, like, things may be rolling to where we have.
A, 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 yeah. Temporary spot.
Yeah.
Something, some raised garden beds in there, put some flowers.
And get those cool covered things, like, yeah, we can do something there.
Good, yeah.
What are you guys, what are you guys looking at wanting to come in though?
Well, the sky's the limit and we're just sitting here brainstorming, find a spot, we find out, we figure out what works best in that spot and because the place, it's kind of what we need first and then we can brainstorm on, okay, this would work well for whatever.
Oh, so.
Yeah, like my project, I'm going to my empty lot, trying to do that food truck part, but just getting in, the plugins are super expensive because I'm not about to pay for four, five different food trucks' power because they're running ACs and fryers and stuff like that. So, I mean, the least that they could do is even rent at a discounted rate is only they pay for their power. So what I did for the donut shop, oh, yeah, the donut people, they, um, I got the electric, electrician to come and put in the plug. And then, um, she and I split the amount, so, um, and then she could come when she wanted. And then, um, it was nice because she could just pop in, pop in, so there's actual electrical, and I'd have to do a bunch of them.
Yeah.
But then I didn't have to cough up all of them all at once and then anybody who wanted to come when she wasn't there was just like, fine. So I could have, let's, so it is something you could work out with your vendors, say, okay, it's gonna cost six hundred dollars. Can you reverse me half a bit over time? And they were like, yes, because we just don't want to have to all the generator.
Yeah, exactly.
And it was a separate meter than here, so it's like, that's okay.
Being on the licensing side of it though, we really need to have some kind of plan for all these businesses for mobile vendors because even the donut place has never gotten the temporary. And so we're really.
Start cracking down.
We're getting a lot of vendors without the adequate licenses and permits, so it's up to Trevor if he wants to rewrite that. But, so like next year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would probably be a project for.
Yeah, I'm just saying that we really need to look at that on my side of it.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely. Yeah, all the recent vendor pop-up markets, they've been getting busted like crazy because they're having anyone, the Department of Health is coming really, and they have to have both the city permit and the, what was that the one?
They have to have a commercial kitchen.
For the place.
Where's that? Not here, I just. Has been.
Three.
Yeah.
I just got kidnapped.
And then, yeah, grab your.
But for all the private, private vendors, like, he was.
Same with John White.
Yeah, to get the health department involved, like that's massive, like.
Yeah. And that's, so we know what's on.
But in waiting to be, I'm like it.
That's good though, because that is have food being prepared.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it hurts the restaurants in town too, you know, I mean, the ones that have to pay at the book, um, brick and mortar prices for everything and and stages and then you could just pop up across the street and, you know, take your peoples. I mean, it's really difficult, even like in Valentine's Day or retail, and I can just speak for this personally, when you have fifty, and I'm not kidding you, like, I can't, I went by those vendors, the street vendors, and we pay, um, city taxes, your life.
Yeah.
And they don't pay the inventory, and they see that cash only, and then they pop up and they leave and so it's like, I mean, you might as well, Mars plural. I mean, their, their business went from five thousand dollars and I'm, I'm making that, five thousand dollars to a thousand.
Yeah.
It's in, in that, it's like, wait a minute, you, these people pay.
Yeah.
On your lawn to be here and bless it themselves and all that. And then, I'm just saying Mars plural because they're downtown people.
My troops, they.
Yeah.
Been there for a long time.
Safeway, Safeway took a hit, you know, their, their.
You know, see, yeah, because the temporary vendors right now is only twenty-five dollars a day for them to set out there.
But even if they pay that twenty-five dollars, they're at least taking the initiative.
But it's still gonna hit all these guys, they'll pay the twenty-five.
And I don't even, I'm like, I don't know, maybe limiting the amount that, and you could, that you could have, I don't know, that's.
That's hard, I mean, imagine all the ones that are not even being reported that are just putting up booths and bit, private business owners' parking lots and storefronts and.
Yeah.
You know, it, who's gonna go around flagging all these people?
And you're not gonna be that, because then you're gonna be labeled as a city that is.
Well, some. Home enforcement does try to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, usually on Valentine's, they'll come and say, hey, do these guys have a?
Oh, good.
No, they do, but, um, there are a lot of vendors out there right now that don't have, but we're working on it though.
Well.
That's good, I'm just, you know, it's just a thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's a concern.
Yeah.
But I was just wondering if you wanted to do something like that, would it just be that area? Do they get, I wonder, those things we need to look at, what, if it's gonna be set differently than just somebody like a mobile vendor truck that's there permanently, or, you know, to look at that kind of stuff too.
But, downtown association. But set that up.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Because it's different than just outside there, right?
So, yeah, that, that could be the downtown parking lots that the city owned or events, when those mad parking lots are managed by the downtown association or whatever, they could do like a vendor base or, or allocate send one aside, try to soften it up and turn it into something different. So that's a possibility, I mean, it's something that you could write into that, so.
The pop-up parties you guys have had, or whoever's had them, have been pretty cool. I like where it's not just the same of everything.
Right.
You have the, yeah, you have the bakery people that are coming in, you have the people like sensey, you have different, it's just not all just food or all just, just.
Yeah, I know, you got. I have the mice. House stuff now and.
I mean, I think Cinco de Mayo is great, but after a while, it's the same, same, same. It'd be cool to be like this thing in Anachi.
Oh, yeah.
That's more of a market.
Yes.
This would be, that would be the perfect spot.
Oh, yeah.
Are you still trying to do it?
Tried that myself.
Uh.
Have you been in there?
Sugar beet?
Yeah.
I've been in there.
I have the keys, you can come, I can come to the inside, it's amazing.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
It's amazing building. We have this really good friend of ours, so, yeah, yes, yes.
Bust something.
Family friend.
He told Karen, Karen would be doing weddings and that was.
Our wedding, it was, it was, there was a party afterwards that was like a kiss.
Yeah.
It's out there, yeah, and a dress was stolen, uh, the girl's dress she changed and it was stolen out there, it made it to the news and it was a big deal.
Oh, no.
So, our wedding is actually their family, so it was a family thing. But then it just became like people came and offered Karen lots of money to break it out and do all these things and she was all gung ho to do it all and then they just took a kind of, took a cut rush.
Oh.
So, I know there was a bit, but I truly involved in that.
No, so, um, I talked to Karen last week, um, she has a private buying firm on board right now and she has some ideas and she wants that's, I don't know if she's talking about it or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, she has, she has some ideas, so, and I wanted to keep the sugar beet factory and I told her we could get a preservation credits turn it into like a little commercial space to do something cool with it.
So.
I just, I think this is again.
Yeah, this would be, um.
Yeah, like, I, 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 I would, I would like, I would be in there, because I know, that's how I know how successful and it's gonna be, because I would do it unless it was like
Right.
Absolutely. Gonna be.
It, that, that building would, something that building.
Would change the whole.
That would be awesome.
The, the Spokane, um, Apple Blossom magazine and that whole thing came and did a whole spread on Tanner's wedding and that building. And the history of that. We got, because that was where I was in Malasham, um, we got probably ten calls a week from people wanting to rent it and I, and I said, would you realize how far it is from Spokane? We don't care, we know there's hotels there. And like, that's crazy.
You have to break this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Revenue trial.
Yeah, somebody offered them ten thousand dollars on a weekend to rent it out, some big company, just to rent it out for a weekend.
What my, I, I told this to Karen once, I told her, what, what my, my dream for this building would be is to talk to. Uh, John Haas and Echo Chief and then do like a beer showcase center, like or like all the houses that they sell to everybody around the world and just. You know, put it in that building, you need to like, I mean, that would.
True. Again, amazing idea.
Yeah, that would draw people from South Africa.
Oh, yeah. Incredible farms, they have, they have people everywhere, kind of Germany, uh, they have, they have ops in Australia, they have ops in. Oh, everywhere. And so that's a perfect, and they're all local.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a showcase.
All of the um.
Potentials for outdoor music, live music, the light.
A lot of attention.
You could walk in for happy hour.
Especially because there will be apartments at some point across the street too, so there's gonna be a built-in critical.
Yeah, I'm not gonna say.
A lot like that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
They'll look that, yeah.
That is, is beautiful, this is a beautiful spot and there's, there's places on the stairs where you could have meetings, there are.
Perfect.
So, it's both, it's both COVID and, you know, multi-use. I would, I would definitely be interested in putting in line for this, my real estate office in there. And we're just to separate it from the wellness center.
And probably your preservation credits is probably paid for the improvements that building.
It's the coolest building, yeah, so if you ever want to.
Circle already. Get it.
I, I started to tell.
We should.
You get the feel of it's, it's messy in there, but right now, but, but you get the feel of just, it's, it's thirteen thousand's worth of.
Wow, we should, we should meet there with these things.
Pick it and I'll go.
Next month.
Next month. Sir, also help.
Yes.
Okay.
That would be so cool.
Next month meeting over there.
Yay.
It was like putting stuff into existence.
Right, we're gonna speak it out out there, we're gonna say a little bit. No, it's all for now. I'm not down soon, so I would love.
Yes, where are you?
So there's.
From Sugar Beet, I'm gonna talk about that.
Okay, I know that, okay.
I'm at the college building.
Okay. And you're down, pop up, yeah, okay.
They have pubs, pubs are okay.
Yeah, pubs are, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
You can have your little donut place in here, you can have a little wine shop, cheese and meats, just go anything.
Are you bringing those maybe?
No, that donut place.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Well, we haven't really enforced it.
Yeah.
But yeah, um, I went to farmer's market in Kilt this weekend and it's a lot like that, but they have a lot of outdoor cool pop-up tents. And they sell so many things and you can do that with this property as well.
Yeah.
It's like homemade soaps, different necklaces, jewelry, really cool thing.
So what I'm a captive, captive audi- audience, I'm doing Boomerang and I'm doing it out there for the sugar beet factory where I started. And since the architecture is not gonna work for me yet, that will French vanilla market. So what do I need to get? I have, it's a private event, I mean, like it's a pay, you pay to get in. Oh, so do I need to?
That's private property or it's private property and I don't, okay, you're good, okay, so like.
Like your food vendors, your food vendors have to be cottage food licensed, food handlers and vendor.
Yeah. So this is. How fish is making this back?
They actually always come.
Yeah, they'll dump the food, they're gonna let you take your food. They'll dump it, so sad. It's so sad.
I haven't been, been insurance on the, on the.
Yeah.
On the property.
Yeah.
We like. Um, so, a question, so if Roger comes, he's a restaurant owner, doesn't he need all this too?
He, he has security, he has some.
Anybody that has it, but anyone that's already established, like, let's say a taco truck that already has a slot, it's already licensed.
Yeah.
Yeah, have, they already have them.
They just have their trans, their permits.
Okay, that's why I didn't want to interrupt you.
Yep, thank you.
But it's good to get that info out there.
They all be interacting.
Oh, absolutely.
Good to know.
Cool.
When is this happening?
Well, I have it, I was gonna pass it out with the.
Oh.
She's gonna.
Where's this happening? This is like the one you've had years ago, isn't it?
Like the first, this is my thirteenth or twelfth annual.
Really?
Yeah.
Is it kind of no rhyme, no reason thing?
No rhyme, no reason?
That's the one.
Zilla and Bramby. Okay, that's awesome.
Yeah, and then I just, yeah, you don't have to, so vintage and then it has all kinds of stuff.
I didn't know you were still doing that, that was stopped, nice.
No, you're not.
I wanted to give you guys an easy, and then, um, if you want to tag me and tag yourself, you can get two free tickets in. Away to the winner of your people. I'm gonna give you all.
Can I have a, can I have a big one to set on my windows and my office? I have one very.
So I have a couple of people that come and if you look back on my, my French vanilla market, they, uh, we did a um, a drone video. Um, a few years ago and, yeah, so I get a lot of people.
Cool.
So that's what I mean, I can't wait.
Yeah.
I'll be there and all the sugar beet factories will be like.
Yeah, this make transition into.
First rounder, rounder will introduce you Karen and it's all, it's a done deal.
Yeah. Yeah. Cool, how exciting.
No, no, no. I have said my, I was just gonna say my conversation, Karen was last week, so I'm sure.
Follow, yeah, just follow, she's, she's like, yeah, yeah.
No, she's, she's been calling with me.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, so this, this is how I know she's serious.
How exciting.
Yeah.
Well, it's good.
Um, I was gonna say for the main street, where are the perimeters, can we get a good map and just?
So, yeah, the next. I mean, I don't know, let's, we can do it here, maybe.
The maps?
Yeah, let's, let's look at it, I can say we can draw it out, but I, we can try it out here, up here too.
I know, because I'd be interested in being in it, but I'm on Edison right here, so.
That's all right.
Not far.
I'm not far, because I'm along the parade route, so it's like, you have a parade route to be on too, it's like. That's always a big, uh. I would say uh, tourism thing whenever we do have the parades, or, yeah.
Okay, so, so oftentimes it's all the zoning districts, so this, this red stuff here is our, I forget the exact. Our retail core B three, so that's like the downtown, that, that was kind of zoned that way. And then here, this light blue, which, which you would fall under, is oftentimes a, it's like a supporting kind of, or the.
Yeah.
It's like a professional business, they call it.
Okay, yeah.
So, um, I'm gonna turn that off now. As I can see more clearly.
I didn't know what it was.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, um, I take a little drawing tool. So, well, we could do something, let's see, where you're, here's the church, so you're on the street, see, I, that's not that bad, because that's. A hospital and everything, um. Kind of. Add in a little bit along here.
And like all the way to Safeway.
Mm-hmm.
Right, during the wrong street.
Yeah, well, so we can kind of define the district a little bit. We wanted to capture Safeway, we can, we can make it as however we wanna make it.
Yeah.
So up to Decatur. Cater. Yeah. Something like that.
What you wanna do in, do, um. Just past Decatur, because you have the, you have.
Oh, yeah, you're from.
Yeah.
That, yeah, that.
Oh, yeah.
Special one's already there.
Mini mall.
No, no.
Yeah.
Oh, I would go.
Okay.
Yeah, up a little bit.
The bakery is already there.
So.
The bakery, that was bakery?
Oh, yeah, because they spend so much money on safety.
Yes.
Yeah. That, you will have it all.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Now, what is the drawback of making it a larger plot, like a larger zone than keeping it smaller?
Um, cost. Well, the benefit would be if you do decide to have this as like some sort of self-assessment thing, um, you have what people pay into that self-assessment. Um, I guess the drawback would be more people have an additional cost on top of their normal business expenses, and this usually not a big assessment, it's like twenty bucks a month or something like that, so. Um, it's kind of however you want to bring it in.
More barrier as far as a pop those.
Yeah, so, and, and especially, I mean, if you wanted to do something like capture, I guess it's whoever wants to be in it too. Some people might.
Let's just say like Bondi wants to be in it.
Yeah.
Being on an ace.
I don't know, so I guess.
To say that.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
It's harder.
Yeah.
It's hard guessing.
But on, um, I would say that, um, bridal needs to be in it too.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, those are.
Yeah.
So, I mean, Addison, Addison, I mean, it basically encompasses Addison and Sixth Street, and that's, those are good streets in the downtown, so the business is along those corridors. Um, I think the, just try and capture that, I think would be super important, so that's our, that's our main street.
Love it.
How typical does it to um, add in or extend or take away, once that we already get it established?
It's, it's not very difficult, it's, it's basically an act of council and then rewriting any sort of. It's basically notifying a major program and that council.
Oh, what do we, if we didn't want like the highway to be a part of that? Or like, you know, out there.
Where?
Like, not to necessarily be like, oh, one huge bubble, but necessarily one zone and another zone like we're talking about.
Yeah, so like, uh, let's throw my zone, for example, like all the businesses in there.
Um.
Would that be considered a whole different project?
It might be, yeah.
That's, it's just a little block area.
Yeah. Yeah, that might be a little bit more difficult, um, because you're a little further down, it's easier when it's more contiguous.
Yeah.
And it targets like the downtown, but there might, there's only stuff popping up for those kind of things.
Yeah.
Look at that. I'll just think about that.
Well, one, once they get started, it's, well, we don't, right, we don't know how to track, yeah, and then once you get. Jump in two feet, in water.
Yeah.
Like a little class.
Yeah.
Inside, what do we do next?
So, um, I'll bring them, for our next meeting, I'll bring an actual map and then we'll probably have to have. An actual study session, so there are a few things I'll have to do next, so we'll probably have to have a study session at the council, because they're not, they're not excited. So we'll probably have to meet at that at some point, probably in the future, uh, so it's actually be there in October or something like that. I'll probably move in, a lot of people from HLA, who's our, who's our women associates, they're our, our engineer and survey firm, but there's a lady there. Who actually set up the main street program for Gamma, um, so she'll be able to really help us with this and kind of tell us all the chain, give us all the ups and downs and challenges. I could probably try her for our next, our next.
Give some insight. Things to think about, yeah, yeah.
I'll think about, um. And then, so talk to her, kind of, to be the ins and outs, the ups and downs, challenges and the opportunities. And then we'll probably have to take that information, bundle it up, take it to a council study sessions with them, explain to them what we wanna do. Um, how, how it'll work, that they'll kind of be their own little government body, kind of, and kind of take charge of programming downtown. Around Edison and Sixth, especially because the city spent a lot of money on, on issue revitalizing streets, so it's, it's gonna get some. Energy going, moving that way.
And momentum.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then if they wanna do it, we need to write an ordinance. Get, again, there's like a handful of like bylaws and some other things we need to get into place, we need, we need to talk about the, um. We, there's a revitalization program that we can kind of put together, how that's gonna work, so there's a bunch of like little, little documents that we in place. Um, that show what we're gonna do, how we're gonna set it up, who's gonna run it, what's the goal, uh, how it's gonna maintain itself, that kind of thing, so once we have all that kind of bundled up. Then we can take it to council for their consideration, submit state. Also, it's a little bit of an initiative, but. But.
Just everyone's.
I know.
But we gotta, we gotta, work on building some consensus, so, that's, that's gonna be a big thing too, is kind of. Um, doing some small workshops, probably with some business owners along these corridors and just saying, hey, what do you think about this, these programs, what do you think about? All this and build some consensus as we move forward and.
So trust.
This is something to bring to the night thing that's coming on tonight. Obviously not tonight, but uh.
Maybe, yeah, maybe in the, this year, maybe in the next.
Just to make the thoughts under that rub of all part right now.
Um, probably.
Maybe the next forum. We need a forum.
Yeah, 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 maybe that, because we do, we, we actually do have.
Strong turnout for that?
Seasonal for it, yeah, yeah, so, and I think.
Audience, I would say.
And actually, I think our next one is community development.
Oh.
So, I think, there'd be a lot of.
That's meant for all of us to be. So what we can do too is invite the different vendors.
Yeah, we could, we.
We need one parameter, what you have, what we're doing, invite them.
Yeah, we can do targeted meetings, we can, we can invite certain sections, so we can just.
We're gonna, uh. Reminder on when that is.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So I can get, send it somewhere.
I don't even know what it is.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I know it's Tommy and I just don't remember one.
Yeah, we're supposed to get like a video and I haven't. Okay.
Well, that looks good.
It does look good.
Well, I thought it was nice.
Our app.
Of course.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's little.
You know, I think next year, we, um, we should do like a whole page, not just us, I'm saying all the committees and commissions who want to do it, if, if they're up for it, you know, and. And they just have a.
Meet your city.
Meet your city.
Yeah.
Meet who's working for you.
Yeah.
We work for you.
Yes.
We can do that next year, so. So everyone can.
I'm gonna get in on it.
Yeah.
So, we are next.
That was it.
The street program.
Yeah.
Oh. Any, uh, anything on certification awards?
Um.
Trying to all have a certification that get approved?
Oh, so no, that, that's gonna go to council this month.
Oh, okay, I thought it was already.
Yeah.
You forgot the beginning of the meeting.
Oh.
They gotta do a resolution, so, once they, once they do the right, enact the resolution, then we can start doing it, I just have to write the resolution, so it's just the time thing.
The law application, remember we're talking, well, there's kind of all the law application, yeah, with the verification awards that we talked about.
Oh, it's.
Can we go with the name?
I think just verification, you know, still, yeah.
And we don't need to, we don't need to, we can be anything.
There's a sudden sign of verification.
And.
Right?
I will see what I can.
If you need help, reach out, because.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's true, yeah.
But I also wanna see what kind of like awards we could do for this too, I think, I was quite interested in this, maybe as a part of this.
Okay. Yeah, you know, there, there's local, um, probably. Yeah, yeah, there, there's local, um, trophy shops that we.
Oh, yay.
Easily make them too.
Absolutely.
So, or just like little plaques, not like, yeah, black.
Yeah.
I mean, what? There was, um, what was it? I remember there was one, I saw on Dulcinea, they were inside the mini mall. They got a really nice one, it was like a glass one, like a little teardrop one, and it said sunny side. Something that's business of the year, or something like that, it was so gorgeous, like what? So, that was back in.
Yeah.
Twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen.
Before COVID.
Oh, yeah, but way before COVID, yeah. Yeah.
You know, it's great.
I will have something.
So, cool. I got two things. Want to be me?
Yes.
Okay, go.
Thank you.
It's not, oh.
I mean, um, a little announcement, I am doing a community, uh, yard sale. At that physical, so it's encouraging cleanup, reuse, reuse, recycle, so, yes. Anybody that wants a spot for a little yard, some spot, they can sell whatever they want, um, just contact me and I can just pocket reserve.
You have a date?
Yes, uh, August twelfth.
Coming up soon.
Yeah, yeah, it's coming up soon, so, um, I will be getting a food vendor there for food, just so people can shop and eat and stuff, and, um. Other day.
I'm here.
Yes, yeah, I'm here at my park, August twelfth, so Saturday, eight to two, eight to two. Um, I am gonna try and get hold of the. Garbage people, to be like, whatever you have, you know what I mean, like reduce, reuse, recycle, I wanna like try to implement that, cleaning up the town. So, either, I don't think I'll have room at my office, but get one of those cleanup days down at the park like we used to.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
That, that'd be good for the same day.
We, we were thinking about that, it's, it's on the agenda, just explore.
To do it in the same day, that'd be cool, to be like, one whole like cleanup day, you know, and it'd be.
Well, two, seven.
Well, August twelfth.
And we're still doing the doctors, aren't we?
Yeah, we do that.
They get one year.
Nice.
They can just come in and ask for it.
Okay.
They, they do have to take it to the landfill, but at least it's still.
But it's there.
Yeah.
It's available.
Yeah.
And that's only in city limits, or is it?
Correct, we only do city limits.
Mm-hmm.
But it's good to know, if you let people know, they ask.
Yes, so.
Yeah, they just go over to utilities and like, in town, it's on our website.
Okay. We need it, we need.
Yeah.
Know about it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we.
They usually put stuff on the, the bill newsletters, but nobody reads those, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that'd be good, yeah, and I will have a whole bunch of these flyers, uh.
Oh, nice, okay, yeah.
It's just, we might not be prepared for.
Oh, yeah. Nice. That's fine. Um, I see we have somebody online with us today, usually don't get anybody, um. We.
Yeah. If you want to.
We'll move into a brief public comment period if, um, you wanted to address the commission at all or have any, anything for the commission.
Hi, I'm just tuning in and hearing, um, what you guys are talking about, trying to learn more about what's going on in Sunnyside. My name is Andy Hope Lerner, I am. The Government Affairs Director for the Central Washington Home Builders Association. And so, you guys are talking about, uh, all the wonderful things that we like to see, making our communities, um, stronger and, and more lively, so I just. Wanted to tune in, I saw the meeting was happening and I thought, oh, why don't I just enjoy lunch and listen to you guys talk, so. Really appreciate it, uh, we're based here in Yakima, but I would love to, uh, hopefully meet with you guys, um. If the opportunity presents itself in the future, but, uh, so you guys meet monthly, uh, and I just, I, I enjoyed listening to your conversations today.
Yes.
Cool, thank you.
Yes, you guys are doing the hard work, so pay attention, I promise.
We tried.
Perfect, well, thank you. Okay.
All right. Where, where are you from again? I'm in the home builder.
Home builders.
Okay.
I'll have to get in touch with you, Andy, um, I'm a local military.
Oh, yeah, sure, so, um, we're the Home Builders Association, we're based here in Yakima. Um, the website, you can find all of our information, seasoncatw, as in Washington, hba.org.
Cool, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Well, if you have anything else, anything from? Items from the committee members? Items from the staff members?
Well, I'll let you know when the revolving room from, goes to council, um, we'll set a hard date for. Or, or Natchi tour and. I will work on the verification.
Yeah.
Volunteer more.
Yeah, yes.
Yes. And thank you Sydney for taking the job.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. So. For next month's meeting, and I want to ask you what has been your favorite restaurant so far, because we, I want to hear that.
Definitely, I'll be spending my money very.
That's what we thought, support local.
Exactly.
Okay, just a quick thing about Loom Rain, um, if you wanna make a post and tag people, you can take two of these flyers and use them as free, um, events, um, under that. So, if they went, so you tag and, you know, you pick a winner from your site, uh, tag me in it, and then just say who you picked. Um, so. And then they can bring this as free events.
Okay.
To there, so just keep two of these.
Okay.
Um, so if you need more of these, let me, uh, they can rise for supporting, they can tag you on Facebook, Instagram or Facebook, either one, tag. Yeah, my post on French vanilla market, it's, it comes up in French.
Okay.
Thank you.
Giving a gun, I have one too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.